Meeting, which is September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm Councilwoman Pam Carter. I would like to excuse Councilmember Paul Pickett. He is out of the country. We have everybody else here. Also, I'd just like to remind everybody that there will be no public comments in the committee of the whole. This is a work meeting for the council members between the department heads and those that have are on the agenda. We are going to start out with, there's no approval of a minute. So we're going to start out with discussion item number one. We may be in the middle of discussion number one, which is ordinance enacting section seventeen point seventy-six point one nine zero of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to residential short-term rentals with Zachary Smallwood and David Rogers. But if four forty-five, we're going to switch over to the county. And they are going to give us some education on a bond that they are wanting us to have information on. It will be Councilwoman Amy Winder Newton and Salt Lake County Associate Deputy Mayor Catherine Fife. Okay, and they will be presenting. If we don't get done with you, Zach, we'll just pick up right after they get done.
That's all right.
The grave's not done.
Yeah.
If we're not, if we do not get done, so go right ahead.
Okay, so we're here to talk about what we've been working on on short-term rentals so far and review kind of the draft text. So. No, no, okay. My computer is having a complete freak out, which is cool. We like that. Very nice. Hold on. Oh my gosh, how embarrassing. Ah, it worked. Okay, I think. Now, now it's doing, oh my gosh, it is being weird. I feel entirely embarrassed because this is.
Don't, that's fine.
Okay, let's, we'll just do it this way. Okay, so four main things I wanted to kind of talk about today. You know, why we're here, what we've been doing so far, where where we're at, and what comes next. So going, so why we're here, we kind of already know, but I just want to rehash it a little bit. So city council, you guys instituted a moratorium on short-term rentals within the city earlier this year. And on August twenty-sixth, we had a workshop discussing kind of policy direction for short-term rentals in the city. With that, so after that, we took all your feedback and we began drafting. So the attorney's office began drafting language using the two thousand and twenty-one drafted language as kind of our primer. Planning and the attorney's office met multiple times to discuss things that were, you know, what ended up in 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 front of you today. They all, the attorney's office also sent it to their outside counsel for review, which is going to be mostly what we talk about, at least from our side today, outside of questions that you guys have. We've also been doing some research. I think, as I mentioned in the pre, before we had the workshop, there there are things that need to be done to be looked at to coincide with with implementing something here. So one of those is researching the costs to implement any, either way, we're going to have a cost. Either it's a full-on ban or allowing them in certain circumstances, there's going to be a cost to the city and what that ends up looking like. So one, we're looking at the host compliance software, which I believe was sent out to all of you. I showed you guys some of the slides that we were presented with that. We are also looking into licensing code enforcement and permitting software. Right now, the city does not take applications online, like any application except for building. The building department just recently started taking them, I think in August of this year. But planning, business licensing and code enforcement, we don't do anything online outside of just emailed applications. So that can take a lot of time. It's not as safe opening up PDFs that you don't know where they're coming from, that kind of stuff. And then generally, we, thanks to GIS, they were able to pull some corporate-owned property throughout Murray City. So I have a map to show you later, I love it. And then, you know, complaints regarding short-term rentals in the city. So where we're at, as far as drafting, so these are going to be our big, big ones. So as a result of the outside counsel and reviewing case, case law, and Mark Richardson's here too. Ooh, I'm just gonna shrink if you guys have questions specific, but.
Who's here?
Mark Richardson, he's with the attorney's office, right there. Yeah. GL is.
I didn't see you go.
GL's out, he's, he's, he's not feeling well, so he's not here today. So we met with the outside counsel, I believe, last Friday. And so what happens is that everything going forward, whenever a code is adopted, anything new will have to come into compliance with the regulations that we have in the code. Anything prior to that is allowed to continue and operate as they are right now, at least by case law. So for example, the hundred and sixty that I showed you, that I sent in those slides would be allowed to continue and operate until they decide to abandon the use and not come into compliance with current regulations.
So they won't have to get a permit?
They wouldn't have to get a land use permit. I believe we can still require them to get a business license, which does hold them to those things. But as far as the land use code is concerned, then no, they.
With business license, yeah, hold them up there.
Yeah.
So it's just regulated through the regular zoning that currently is.
Yeah, that's in, that's in place today, yeah.
So there is some regulation.
No, there has been no regulation on short-term rentals thus far.
Okay, but not specifically for short-term rentals, but for zoning, for, you know, like parking regulations?
Yes.
Just for that area, for whatever the zone is.
Yeah, so if it's just a single.
So there is something.
Yeah, so if it's a single-family dwelling, they're required to have two off-street apartments, right? Yeah, so they'd have to maintain that. The length of the non-conforming, so that can, like I said, go into perpetuity. There's also, there's this thing that we talked about last time, if you remember the, and I have a hard time saying it, amortization of it. We did, so that's kind of the sunsetting of of non-conforming uses. So that can happen to a degree. There's some gray area in there, but it can't just be after two years, you're done. According to the outside counsel, it has to be based on some factual kind of formula. So like you, you take the average, average cost of like a house or the house that's currently operating a short-term rental, right? And plug in, you know, ninety-nine dollars a night, which is kind of the average of Murray City. And however many nights that, however many days that is, that's kind of their amortization period. So like I, for example, I just threw out like a five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar house and ninety-nine dollars a night, it would take them fifteen and a half years to amortize, which isn't great. But that's what it seems to be happening from the ombudsman's office. And yeah, case law, stuff like that. So, but the non-conformings, we can require to be registered. They can at least register with us, so we know that they're there and we can require a business license. So.
So anything moving forward from today?
Anything moving forward from when this code, yeah, when the code is adopted, that will go, that will go forward. Enforcement, the attorney's office researched that as well and found that it can only be a Class C misdemeanor.
It can't find?
Yeah, I suppose so.
I understand that because I know several other cities are fighting for short-term rentals violations. Why are, why are we the oddballing?
And that's a great question that I can't answer, and I don't know if.
I can, I can tell you as far as what a Class C misdemeanor, the penalties are for a Class C misdemeanor. I don't know if other cities have some sort of civil enforcement on that, but the state puts out a uniform bail schedule where they make recommendations for, for fines or penalties. And under local ordinances for Class C misdemeanors, the maximum you can go is is one thousand eighty-two dollars, but the, the recommended fine is a hundred and ten.
Now, the code, as we read, it's each day is a violation, so they would, if they violate for like seven days, that's seven misdemeanors?
You could potentially sign for every day there's an infraction.
Yeah, so that's the unfortunate news that that we've had to work through a little bit. So where we're at, as far as research, I mentioned the Granicus Host Compliance that identifies short-term rentals across seventy platforms and allows us to enforce a lot easier. It actually provides us addresses and able to, so that we can send letters to people and say, hey, come in, register, you know, or if it's past the date and we haven't seen them operating before, then we can say, hey, either you're not allowed or whatever, however it works. Licensing enforcement and permitting software, we are working with IT right now to find something. We're initially looking at what the building division has just recently started using. I think it would work for us, but that will most likely be an ask. The reason for that ask is, if you think about it, so the planning division processes roughly about a hundred and fifty applications a year. And that's on the really high side. This by itself, if I get all one hundred and sixty short-term rentals in at once, that's, that's a huge influx. That's doubling our, our workload, pretty much, just doing short-term rental permits and registration and verifying that. Being able to do something online where they can submit it instead of emails back and forth. And, and, you know, entering that in all manually, letting them submit everything will save time and, and a lot on our end. It would also work with licensing as well, because one of the things that we can verify on their business license for the ones that are currently operating is like that they have a transient room tax number, right? So that, that would be able, allow us to easily verify that information as well. So here's where we're at. So the GIS found fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one residential parcels in the city. Of that, five hundred and eleven are corporately owned. So this is a heat map, so the darker the color, the more that you have as a corporate-owned, owned dwelling. Now, to be clear, not all corporately-owned dwellings are going to be short-term rentals. There are corporately-owned people that, you know, for whatever reason, taxes, whatever, you have people that do own LLCs and stuff. This is the best data that we could compile here. Complaints, we have that pulled from two thousand and twenty-two to today. We have had a total of thirteen, thirteen complaints on short-term rentals. So about two years' worth of stuff, it's about, what, four-ish a year? So what comes next? So we're going to take into consideration what the outside counsel has, has recommended to us and keep working on drafting. There's some additional language that we want to clean up before it gets out to the planning commission, which we anticipate a little over a month from, I guess exactly a month from today. I don't have a committee of the whole date on there, but, because I didn't write it down, but then we are hoping for city council on December first. So that's kind of where we're at, at the moment. So I'm happy to talk. If you guys have questions, I'm sure you have questions.
I think it's mainly just, I, just hold, we're on a holding pattern.
I have questions about the ordinance itself.
Sure, please.
Section D two A. There's an exception for a residential lease of thirty or more consecutive days.
Correct.
So is that, are we allowing then a sublease of an apartment to an Airbnb?
No, no, that, so anything that, anybody right now, so like can rent out their, their dwelling for more than thirty days of time, that's just a regular rental. So that's like renting a house?
Yeah, but there are some Airbnbs that like, they go to an apartment, rent the apartment, and then Airbnb that, that apartment. So are we allowing that by allowing that exception?
No, I, I, I don't believe so, because what this is really saying is that any lease of thirty or more consecutive days is a long-term lease and therefore it, it's not subject to the short-term rentals. If anybody is doing less than thirty, though, then that's when the short-term rentals would kick in. So if, if say Airbnb owns a piece of property and lists it for rent on a short-term basis, then yeah, they'd be subject to that. But if it's somebody that is leasing their, their property for an apartment complex, let's say, right? And then trying to sublease, I think there are exceptions in there that don't allow them to do that. And these are all in single-family zones.
Zach, Mark's, Mark's taking notes and we'll, we'll.
Yeah, and we'll take notes and verify too.
Hey, Mark, is there a way, like within the sale of a property, to put in a covenant that it can't go to a corporate for re-leasing? Within the city?
If they couldn't, if a corporate buys it, that they couldn't lease it out?
They couldn't like sublease it to short-term rentals?
That sounds.
I wouldn't think so, but I, we can look into that.
I'm assuming the covenant could be what is like a, an option to say, you know, if you are purchasing this property, you can't sublease it. Or I know a covenant of, of an exchange of a sale, they use that quite often.
And actually, let me clarify, this actually does cover this, is that in, in section E four, everything that we're proposing, the owner, the owner of the property has to reside in the dwelling if the short-term rental is happening. So they couldn't, so that does cover, yeah, so it does cover it, it's, it's, yeah, so they couldn't do that at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So they could do it if they were living in the apartment theoretically?
No, because they don't own the apartment.
Oh, okay.
Is that owner occupancy?
Yeah. Pam, you said you may have some questions?
Oh, the only one I have was number seven.
Under?
Oh, I don't know, it says urgent response, the owner probably, okay, so letter B, where it says a citation may be issued. Could we put will be issued or just kind of look into that, just into that wording?
Yeah, we can look into the wording.
Yeah, and then the nameplate, I don't know if that is breaking some of the outside counsel, that we can't require that, but permanently attached? Can you explain what permanently attached means? Like, is it going to be permanently attached with Velcro and then ripped off and shoved in the garage? Or is it going to be permanently attached? And who clarifies that it is permanently attached? And you don't need to answer me now.
No, no, that's okay, I can, so what I intended, and, and I think this is a good discussion item to have regarding this, and I have five minutes, so, oh, actually, four forty-five, no, ten minutes. So these nameplate signs and, let's see, I think the property maintenance requirements, some of those were all based on the concept of the unhosted sharing, so let me go.
Oh, okay.
So if, if, if we remember, so when we talked in our workshop, we were calling unhosted sharing something that wasn't, it wasn't defined the right way and the, the same way in the code. So just for our purposes here, these are the three that we're talking about. We have hosted, which is the person lives in the, the owner lives in the property and currently, while the guest stays. Yeah, unhosted means that's the, they live there half a year and then they lease it out half a year, whatever. And then there's dedicated vacation rental, which is nobody lives there, they just rent out the whole time. So let me, with that being said, most of this was based on unhosted sharing. So, so if, what I anticipate and what I would prefer is to pretty much eliminate the nameplate sign, because the owner should be there during those times, yeah. And if not, they can, a resident could call and make a formal complaint. But the owner should be there. So the, the reason for the nameplate was for those times where the owner's not there.
Very good.
Yeah.
Which we've been educated further, so, yeah, got it.
So you're going to pull that out?
I would like to, yeah, I would like to, because I don't think it's really necessary.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. And then. I kind of went over with this with Paul before he left. Where, number eleven, where it says inspections? Do we need inspections if it's going to be a hosted home? Should there still be inspection going on? Like making sure there's a fire extinguisher, escape roofs? Smoke detectors? Or is that not required? Once again, you don't have to answer right now, you can look into it. I was just, you know, because if we're just looking at hosted share, hosted, then they'll be there anyways to help them.
Yeah, in, in all honesty, I think it is, I think it is prudent to at least have an inspection at the business licensing renewal.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's pretty standard. They do a lot of inspections at renewals already.
Okay. And then, be, I don't know how to word this without. If the state comes in with their own short-term rental, will we be obliged to follow their short-term rental? Or can we still, and that can be a question later on, I'm just throwing it out so you guys can look at it. Do we follow their short-term rental or do we follow our own?
Sure.
So that, you know.
Yeah, and I can answer that pretty easily too. So there's, there's two, depends on how they word their legislation. So if they word it in a certain way, we can be less restrictive than the state. Or if they word it a different way, we can be more restrictive than the state. So it kind of depends on how they word it. So whatever happens, if, if we end up being more restrictive and if they've worded it in such a way, then yeah, we could probably follow our own. But if they say that you must allow something, then we have to be broader.
And on that, the last bill that was run by Calum Muselman about two years ago, didn't make it out, but it was kind of an opt-in situation where a city could opt in and get a increased tax benefit off of it. So it wasn't forced in. Who knows what the next legislature, but that gives you an idea of what they were thinking about for two years ago.
Okay. Letter H, where it says suspension or revocation, number two. Would, would that have to go with hosting also or not, because it is now hosting and people are going to be there?
I think we're talking about the same thing, committed an assault?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I believe that is the intent as well, is that it's for the property owner and any of their guests.
Okay, okay.
But we can.
Says owner or renter.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. I didn't have any questions, but then I looked at my notes.
Other questions? All right.
Okay.
I'm good, I have the question about, there was a, a word I had never heard before, but I can't find it now, so.
There was, there are some typos, but I'm assuming they'll be, you doubt this will be going?
They always do.
This was a GL writing over the weekend, granted, Lisa, then you can get it to me on Tuesday morning type of writing.
It's a draft, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it all polished up before the seventeenth.
Yeah, I can't find it, so.
And we're always around, so if you find it, let me know and we can, can chat about it.
Like seven eleven, twenty-four seven?
Exactly, always here. Okay, well then I guess.
Thank you.
We're ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
We appreciate it.
You guys are great. We'll just wait for Amy to come in.
Awesome. Okay. Yeah, she, she just, just barely.
Want me to admit her right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jennifer Kennedy. Hey, I'm just letting you know, we just finished our items, we're just waiting for them to log in and then we'll, we'll turn the time over to them. Okay, is, is Amy going to be on too? Perfect, awesome, thank you. Hey, bye-bye. Is she there, can she hear us?
It's a commercial, can you hear me?
She can't hear us.
Can you hear me?
She can't hear us?
That's what Patty's saying.
Can you hear me now?
Well, she's muted.
Do I ask her to unmute?
Yeah. Is that it, okay? Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear us?
Yes, this is Catherine Fife, yes, I can hear you.
Hello.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful.
You might want to, I don't know when Amy gets here, she's all here. And Councilmember Newton's going to join you, correct?
She is, and are you guys ready for us?
We are ready for you, we're ready for you, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I, well, we're just, we actually are just finishing up the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, thank you guys for your patience, thank you guys for having us.
You are more than welcome.
I can't see you guys, though.
You don't want to.
I, I think they're working on, it's surely the second Zoom we've had since we've been in.
Yeah, technology is a friend and not a friend to us. And I think what was important is if you can see us, and then I'm going to try to share my screen. and then I'm trying to share my screen, um, which maybe I should just.
Does it just show you?
While we're waiting for Councilmember.
Does it show you? No.
We'd have to switch the camera source. You wanna turn that on?
Who's it gonna be showing me? Cause I. Turn, turn it around.
I can, I can plug in the other camera. I just don't know, cause he's controlling cameras as well.
Yeah, I think she's okay if she can't see us, she said.
Okay, cool.
As long as we can see her.
We can all walk around and say hi.
Okay. Right here.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Hello. Um, which is that I'm trying to share my screen here and it's not working. Oh, we try a little bit. Oh, okay, see, it's telling me. Oh, do you have Amy? Do you guys have?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, okay. I was like, I thought I wasn't, but that's great, okay.
She should have permission to share.
Yeah, maybe I must know if you can see my screen, but now it's a matter of sharing the right thing.
I can see you, I can't see your screen.
Um. So in order to share, it's telling me to quit and reopen. So if it locks me out, I'm going to rejoin this.
Okay, sounds good, you're back in. That's weird.
Give her permission?
She has permission, tell her to even go back in.
That's weird. Put down the share button there, hit the arrow, you'll just see. The arrow next to the share button.
She should have. Should I go in here?
She loves it. I think so. At least as we participate.
Yeah, don't say she couldn't share it since she.
She shouldn't have anything to do with.
I know she didn't leave the hair for her playhouse.
And she has multiple screens. That might be an issue as well.
So she.
She's sharing one screen, they have another.
She was here.
She won't, yeah, she has a record, she's. She liked what she was.
She likes what?
Liked what she was.
Oh, okay.
I almost said something, Tony. You're even saying that, I figured you were. Cause last time you were really good, you know? That was good.
Oh, no, am I on there twice now?
You're on there twice now.
I know. Oh, that is so strange. Okay. Okay, now this one, so now we're gonna try to share the screen again. And. Oh, I can't remember what I mean, just.
Okay, we can see your screen now.
Oh, lovely, okay, wonderful. Thank you, I'm gonna just try and get this right. And first, oh, okay, hold me. Can you guys see, I can't see us and the presentation at the same time.
We can.
Our pages real quickly and then you can see both of us here. Can I say quick, hi? Guys, I'm so sorry, we had our, uh, our Public Safety Bond, public hearing just now and had to wait till I finished around, around to the meeting, so. Um, anyway, if I can just, have, have you said anything yet? Okay. I just wanna kick it off by saying, first of all, thank you for what you did for me and, right? We're so grateful for all of your hard work and we know public service, especially these tough times or big sacrifice, so thanks for what you do. Um, on this Public Safety Bond, we are looking for a vote of the people in this November election. It would be a $507 million bond and it's for public safety. So what we're looking to do, Catherine's gonna get into specifics with you, but basically what we're looking to do is take our current OXO gel, that is the old building. Um, we house low, we house low-level offenders there right now. But it's kind of a mess. We've got like our kitchen in one jail and then across the street, our laundry is still using another and it's back and forth. And OXO is not a good, long-term, high-security place for people to be. So we're looking to get rid of the OXO beds, but then add on to our adult detention center with more jail beds. We're also looking at doing a step-down approach to help people get back in housing and, uh, jobs and everything else. And then we wanna build a justice accountability center. Catherine will give a little bit more details on that. What we leave the last number eight, we'll be able to help low-level offenders who need to, um, spend some time, uh, take a break and, and also be able to get them or help us as far as mental health and substance use and, and, um, anyway, so she's gonna move into the specifics. But we would love to have your support on this. Um, interestingly enough, we, you, you know, we've got a bipartisan council that are a partisan council that's really evenly split, um, down party lines. And we have eight of our nine council members support this and continue to support it. And so it's very much a bipartisan effort. And, uh, we're working closely with the mayor's office and just all in this together. And we know that there's some issues that we need to take care of and we wanna do that. So, um, with that, I will kick it over to Catherine and she'll share some more specifics. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Um, I think you actually did a really great job just talking about the basics. And so I do have a slideshow to share. Um, and I'll go through it quickly because I think that it would be really great to be able to have a conversation and to just make sure that you guys have clarity of bond. While it's, um, pretty straightforward, it is one component of a larger plan that Mayor Wilson's, Salt Lake County has put together to really address some gaps that are, um, uh, in our system throughout, you know, that are dealing with criminal justice, homelessness and behavioral health issues, specifically mental health and substance use disorder. And so while, you know, there's this large plan, often they get confused a little bit. Uh, there's a big plan that we're talking about several solutions, but really this bond will be us, uh, reimagining the way that our jail and, you know, the systems are working within the jail so that we can stop this cycle and that we can make sure we're holding people accountable in the right ways, that we're doing things that serve our community, everyone in our community efficiently and that we're making communities safe and better for all. So, um, with that, I'll go ahead and share my screen. And then again, I won't be able to see myself. And so if you, if there's anything weird, just interrupt me or if you have a question, just feel free to interrupt me too, because I wanna be sure, um, that, you know, there's clarity and, um, as we're having this presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Again, see. Thank you for your patience with the logistics. Okay. So here it is, we can go through this and then if there are questions after, after the presentation as well, we can follow up offline, um, with some more details of that is covered as well. Uh, but really, this is, um, to start off, this website, there's information for you to access on Salt Lake County's website, um, the bond language, the information, the PowerPoint, the information, there's a one pager that's a little bit, um, uh, more, um, brief and then also the bond language itself. So you can find all of that on the website. And then I just wanted to start off with, you know, just really talking about how our, you know, just putting an explanation away, how Councilmember Newton said, we need to have, um, the public needs to weigh in on, uh, really a significant county-wide criminal justice system, need the solution to the needs and improvements within our criminal justice jail system and how we're serving those two cycles through the criminal justice system. Um, over the last year, uh, we've been really working hard internally with Salt Lake County, um, in the mayor's office, as she, as she mentioned with the council, with our other partners with the sheriff, with the DA, um, with the state and, um, others who have really just told us to, um, who helped inform what the needs are and that has really informed what this proposal is. It balances public safety and human services needs. It realigns the Salt Lake County jail and really incorporates the human services systems with it. It creates an environment that will really help to, um, reduce reaping offenders and really help the communities towards our science. It, it really is funding a missing element in our system and helping make our communities safer by replacing outdated infrastructure as well. And just like, you know, I'm sorry, there's some noises, if you hear them in my, on my background, my laptop.
Wait, Catherine, are we supposed to see the slides?
Oh, are you not seeing the slides?
No, we're not seeing the slides. We're just seeing your.
Logo, Salt Lake County Public Safety Bond. We haven't seen number two yet.
Just make sure you're sharing the right, I think.
And we lost your voice.
All right, let's see, this is just unfortunate.
Just make it big. Well, I think she was trying, but it came out.
Will you can see your light cube that now?
And we can see, yeah.
Can you see the?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Can you see this now? No. We just see the, we just see the presentation screen. We don't see the actual presentation of the slides.
So you can't see the slides that I'm clicking through right now?
No.
We can't.
We can see it.
It's not a full screen.
They're, they have another set of slides up there.
Um, I do have a link if, um, if you wanna try. I'm so sorry, guys, I do wonder, cause I know that we have limited time with you as well. Should we just talk about it and then send you the images? We can hold the pictures. Talk about it, we'll send them the slide deck.
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay with you guys?
Sure. You guys could go through it through the slide deck, we just can't. Yeah, that's fine. I think Brad sent me over the slide deck earlier, so I can send it to them.
Okay, that's awesome. Well, okay, then I'm gonna quickly just see if there's other little things that we need to touch on and then we'll let you get back to your media. We'll send in all the information. So one of the things I think is, um, the most interesting and where we got a lot of people who were confused is we had an announcement probably a couple of months ago about Mayor's homeless plan and how we're gonna address some of the systemic gaps, uh, or the systemic gaps. And one of the things that I think is really interesting to note is we've got the slide here, so I'm, I'm just showing you every of these people for it. But it talks about how this Public Safety Bond is incorporated into that plan. So we have other things that we wanna do, like, um, outstanding helping units and, um, the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency Task Force and recognizing more girls on the streets and everything else. But, um, building a justice and accountability center and improving the jail, um, is just a piece of that. So with this yellow over here are the, that's the bond and that kind of shows how it fits in overall with the, the system. So I think that's the only thing that you wanna get to do when you look at this. And then, um, can you give me anything else? Yeah, I think so. I think we should, uh, let you know too about what will be in the act, what the bonds. So the bond is, is $507, um, uh, million dollars. And so you can see that as well. The actual cost, I think it is important to point out that it is $607 million. It's Salt Lake County, because it's been really, physically responsible and set aside some, um, $100 million to really make sure that the bond lasts and the burden of taxpayers was reduced. And so that equates to about, um, for an average value of a home of $602,000, um, that it costs to a household would be $58.94 per year. That equates to about $5 dollars from us. So I think that's important to talk about. And what is included in that, in that $507 million is, okay, so taken and Councilmember said it, is it takes, um, the, the one, uh, it brings everything into one facility. So it closes down the OXO and then brings everything into one facility. And it about doubles the number of mental health beds within that jail to better serve the, those who are being held accountable and who are in the criminal justice system need to be there, but also need some more intense medical hospital order. What it also includes is a step-down facility or kind of a community correction facility. So 100 beds for individuals who serve their time, who need to re-enter into society. And what we wanna do is, is help with that re-entry. So people are in the, in the step-down beds or the community corrections, uh, beds, they would be able to, you know, um, have, uh, look for employment, um, look for education, get treatment, so those kind of things. What we really wanna do is have a criminal justice system that focuses on re-entry so that, um, when individuals have served their time and have been held accountable, they will come back, they'll be successful and our communities will be better off. And then individuals will be better off. So I think that's important as well. And then on the side of it, um, we're outside of it and it's a justice and accountability center. Those are additional free terms that are really looking to better serve individuals who, as the Councilmember said, they go into jail and then two hours later, they're not there. So here's a structured, um, secure supervised facility that is really focused on stability, making sure that people who are in a mental health crisis or are, are, you know, committing petty crimes, that, um, we're able to stop it in a, in a way that helps to make sure they're not entering deeper into the criminal justice system and we can get them the supports they need and prevent the crimes from, from escalating that criminal, um, the justice involvement, you know, increasing. So we wanna make sure that they have what they need to then go on to this, uh, success, um, requires as well and in the community.
So I think those are a couple of things just to point out. Um, yeah, I think those are.
Yeah, I think that's great. The other thing too, I'll just point out too, we have not added any jail beds since 2001. And yet our population is probably 100,000 people. And so 23 years ago, um, was the last time we added any jail beds and, and, and we've seen it, an increase in our population. You ask your police officers, um, I'm sure some of them will say some of their frustrations are things like, well, we take somebody in, we get them booked and then they're out a few hours later or whatever, um, depending on, you know, if the judge lets them out or if the jail's capacity is reached or whatever. We wanna fix that. We wanna make sure everybody has a basic info that's gonna give them the best help to help them be successful in their lives and to help keep our communities safe. And so, um, anyway, we'd love to have your support. If you have any other questions, let us know. And then thank you for your patience with our technology.
Thank you, Amy. Catherine, we really appreciate your presentation. And get those, uh, slides over to Jennifer. Okay, that would be great. I just wanna let you know that, uh, Councilmember Paul Pickett is not here today. He is out of the country, but the rest of us four are here. And thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Winder, for everything that you do for Murray. We really appreciate your support with us. Um, does the council have any?
It's me, Otter Endri.
Do we have any questions for Councilwoman Amy Winder or Ms. Fife?
No.
Not at this point.
Not at this point, we don't, but we know we can get ahold of you, right?
Yes.
Please reach out if you have any questions. We wanna make sure that you are armed with all the information that you need. If you have questions from constituents, um, you know, ballots are gonna be mailed out October 15th. And it'll be some educational materials, but we want to make sure that our voters are informed and make a decision that's best for them.
And I really appreciate how you broke it down per month because when people hear $58, they think it's gonna be every month. And I really appreciate you breaking it down to $5 and some odd cents per month. That's more digestible and accepting. And so we thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you two have done.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for all you're doing, we really appreciate you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, well, with that. Okay, well, with that, I think that was discussion item number two. There's no other discussion items after that. So I will adjourn this meeting and at 5:15, we have, oops, less than 10, about 10 minutes, we will go into the council chamber for our RDA meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.